So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of the Indianapolis Public Library. Can we have a call of the roll, Ms. Gilbert?
Yes, Mr. Beederman.
Present.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Great, the chair recognizes a quorum. So welcome everyone to the January twenty twenty five meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. My name's Ray Beederman. I'm the president of the Board. This is my first meeting, so I thought I would do just a small introduction of myself. By way of background, my wife and I were parents of two great kids who use the library on an almost daily basis, whether checking out books or using the Libby app on on my phone when it's story time. So most recently, we've read Mary Pope Osborne's Magic Treehouse collection, Thomas Rockwell's How to Eat Fried Worms, university with a degree in music education, and obtained a J D from the IU Robert H. McKinney School of Law in two thousand nine. I'm an entrepreneur and an attorney celebrating ten years in business after starting my career at a large Indianapolis law firm. In addition, I'm an adjunct lecturer at Indiana University in the areas of data privacy and electronic discovery. Finally, I serve on the Board for a great organization called Freetown Village. I am honored and humbled that my fellow Board members entrusted me with the responsibilities of Board President, and I look forward to serving our community in this capacity. Alongside my fellow Board members, I'm excited to continue to build on the positive momentum of the Indianapolis Public Library and specifically in ushering in our new strategic plan. With that, let's proceed with tonight's meeting. I now invite Ms. Connie Scott, Branch Manager for the Warren Branch, to share her report. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, and good evening to everyone, to our Board members, our C E O, our honored guests and staff. I'm Connie Scott. I am the Branch Manager of the Warren Public Library, and I'm glad to be here to talk about our library. There you see a picture of us, a nice lovely spring day, different from what we have today. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about the library here. We have, next, who we are. We, I am the Regional Branch Manager. We have a circulation supervisor, page supervisor, four full-time librarians, adult two, adult librarians, two children's lib, two children's librarians. And we also have a part-time computer assistant. We serve a one-service desk, and let me not forget about our volunteers who are very active. They help us with the pick lists, with our displays, and they love to come into the library and help us. And we have since hired, since last time you met here, here, we had, I think, four pages. We have six library pages of, from all different diversity, different ages and genders, and we're happy to have them, and they're a good crew. They've been trained very well by our page supervisor, who's also our children's librarian. Next, our total base population is, according to the data, is one hundred and five thousand six hundred and seventy-four. We serve the Warren District, which is a very large district. And as you came to our library, you see, we have Lakeside Elementary School right next door to us, and we have a lively report with them as well. In fact, our page supervisor slash children's librarian has started a book club for the second graders, and they come over to the library to visit and visit and take out books and see what the library is all about. We also have three parochial, four charter schools, and twenty-three daycare centers. That's why I put on some of the information here that we are higher than similar geographics with proximity to quality child care. So that means we do quite a bit of outreach in this community. We also have age distribution of youth, and this is according to the S A B twenty twenty-two statistics, and they're higher than similar geographics. So we have a lot of youth here in all different categories. So that means we do a lot of outreach to our community centers, the café, which is on East Thirty-Eight, and also the Morehead Resource Center, which is part of the Warren Township school system. Next, so this is how we serve, active cardholders, you can see from there, new registrations. And we have seen an uptick of new registrations for our immigrant population. According to the census, our population comes from Mexico, Honduras, Guatemala, Haiti, and Nigeria. We see a high population of our Haitian population here. We work with the community centers and also with our I P L Immigration Welcome Center to see what we can do to help this population as well to get acclimated to the library. So a lot of our new registrations have come from being out in the public, and also some of them getting information from our website, and the gatekeepers that help them are coming in to sign them up for library cards. So we're very proud of that and working with the Immigration Welcome Center. We are also looking, having a welcome neighbor for the Haitian population, and we do have E S L classes, which will start in March, and we did have those last year as well. Our door count, we have quite a few people coming in and out of Warren Library, and we have a large population of our students after school from the Warren High, Central High School. So we have a lot of activity here, and then our physical checkouts, as you can see, and our programs and program attendance. And this year, we exceeded our program attendance. We, we increased, we had more programs, and we also had a high attendance of our programs. We have a lot of people checking out DVDs and media are very popular here. And we also have, as far as our service points, we do a lot with the computer reference assistance, helping people with the copier, helping people with our scanners, our faxes. So we are in the top five, I believe, of the branches, including Central, that we are a point-of-need branch, where people are coming in to fill out their tenant information, fill out forms, also for jobs, they're filling out job applications, and also some of our seniors looking at the Social Security, getting information from the government. So we are a high-point-of-need branch. Also, our service is high as well. Our community room is used, we have one quiet study room, and that is used very popular by the patrons, we, our library users, as I like to call them. We have tutoring here, whether it's tutoring special needs or tutoring one-on-one. We have a lot of special needs groups coming into the library, and we also give them tours as well. Our reference increase, our reference questions increase. And when you talk about reference, we're having questions besides the point-of-need question, how to do their devices. We are also looking at readers advisory. We have a lot of people who read cozy mysteries, or they've read something in our racial equity collection, and now they're looking for more. So we try to accommodate them as well and give them some suggested, if you read this, then maybe you'll like this. We have seen a decrease in our, serving our service area, and that's only because one of our branches in our region, for it being open. So we also partner with them as well as far as programming. So there's a lot going on at the Warren Library, and I like to say, as we look ahead at the strategic plan, we are looking at the merging needs of our learners, looking at steam, especially with our Warren Central High School students. We're also looking with a sense of belonging of how we can bring more people in, and we want to increase our library card registrations. So everyone will get that library card, which will open up a world of treasure for them here in the library as far as resources. We are also looking as far as well-being, partnerships, and I like to say, I do have some representation from the Far East Rotary here tonight, the Goodwill Nurse Service, who works with first-time teenage mothers, where they can get a nurse for a certain amount of time. And also, we also partner with the, of course, the school, Principal Taylor, and we also work with Pathway Resource Center. And last year, we celebrated our fiftieth anniversary, and we partnered along with the Pathway Resource Center and the Gleaners Food Bank. And we also received, and I like to show and tell, we received a plaque, an official plaque, from Senator Lakeisha Jackson, noting our fiftieth anniversary and our service in the library. So we're very proud of that. And the next, any questions or comments about for me today?
Great, well, first off, just great work. You're doing great work, serving our community and finding needs and filling those needs in our community. It's, it's really great to see that from this branch. With that, any questions from the Board, questions or comments?
Just a comment, we're living in highly politicized time. The Immigrant Welcoming Center and others that are supporting immigrants here, are you thinking about or anticipating some of the things that might happen with some of the immigrant families? Because you've been so supportive of them.
Yes, in fact, it has, not to be political, but also last year, when there was talk about what was going on politically, we noticed a decrease in some of our immigrant population coming to the library. And I think that's indicative of other areas as well, that might be the fear or not knowing what is going on. But when they come in, we make them, we are very welcoming. So I anticipate that it'll be much better that they will see the library as a resource. As I said, we're going to offer, we already offer the E S L classes. When those groups come in to sign people up for library cards, I give them, or one of my staff members, a short tour of the library, and we show them our Spanish and also our Haitian Creole collection, and especially in the children's area. So I don't, I, I, there might be some changes that I cannot, cannot speak to, but as far as a librarian, and as a librarian of forty-plus years, we are going to serve our community as best we can to support them.
I noticed in the write-up that one of your staff members speaks Haitian Creole as well.
And French as well, is the difference. And we do have the language line here, so if he's not here, we also use that resource that most of the libraries have now, so we can get to an interpreter, so they can get the information that they need. But as usual, most people do come with a family member who speaks English or their child or someone here, so we kind of help them that way, also on the phones as well, so you can use the interpretation there.
Any, any other comments or questions?
A comment.
Okay.
So just want to thank you for all the work that you do. I know we've met and visited here during the time that there's a lot of the high schoolers coming in, so thanks for taking good care of them and the rest of the community.
Thank you, Dr. Palacio, who is our representative for Warren, we work closely, so, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next, we have public comments. So we welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries, and at this time, when the public may address the Library Board. If there are several individuals representing the same group, please select spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comments someone else has offered. Please note, the public comment is not in appropriate form for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the C E O or the Human Resources Department, where a matter can be addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute time limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name, and if they are speaking on behalf of a group. Ms. Gilbert, do we have any public comment today?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two, we have Deborah Holmes, and then we have Deb Errett and Melinda Mulligan. So Deborah Holmes, if you'll step up, please.
Welcome.
Okay, hi, good evening. My name is Deborah Holmes, and I work for the Goodwill Corporate Office of Goodwill, and I work for Nurse Family Partnership. I am a certified community health worker. I love this library, and the reason why is because I come here every other Friday from spring to fall, set up a table, and the people that come in don't know about Nurse Family Partnership, what we have to offer. So this gives us a wide variety of young people that comes here from school and from jobs to learn about Nurse Family Partnership. And what we show them and teach them, I have a baby doll sitting up there for them, the people that come in, or adults also, and they want to know about us. What do we do, what are we about? And we are about R N nurses helping first-time moms for two years free. We come to them, they don't have to leave their house if they don't want to. And the criteria is if they eligible for food stamps, Tana, any public services. And so what I do here is bring the people to me. I'm coming to them, but they're coming to me when they see me. And Nurse Family Partnership has been in Indianapolis now eleven years from Goodwill. We are all over the county now, we are in ninety counties now. We just got into Cornwall, I go to Cornwall, I go all over to find out, you know, to set up. I love Warren, though, because it's friendly. The kids come in and smile, and the young girl sit at the table or look at the tables, oh, no, not me, not me. I said, that's right, get an education, get married. You know, and then we have also people that are from different languages and different countries, and some of them don't speak English. So I have on my phone, when they talk, it automatically tell me what they're saying, and then I can tell them what to do. And a lot of them don't understand first time. Some of them believe, first time, no, four times, no, we can't help you this time. But I love this library because Ms. Connie opened the door for me to come in, set up a table, put my stuff out, so people can see what we do. Because we not advertise itself very little on TV, and if you've seen Goodwill's advertisement, they kind of like advertise late at night when people are in the bed or getting up early. And so one of my jobs is to sort, get out in the public, I, for them to see what we do. I love this library because no matter what time it is, I can come in and set up, and Ms. Connie will say, I can say, I forgot what time I'm supposed to be here, I can call her. She'll have everything ready for me to put on my table. And then I work side by side with other people from Wishard. We all set up, and we set up and get information out to the public. Sometimes it's best for them to see you at work in the public, instead of just talking on the phone. They can call, we give flyers out with Spanish, Haitian Creole, and English brochures, so they can see who to contact, and I'm, contact me most of the time, but I refer them to a nurse, and then they go on for two years. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We have Deb Errett and Melinda Mulligan from Staff Association.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As many of you know, my name's Melinda Mulligan, I'm the manager of the Wayne Branch Library, and with me is?
Deb Errett at College.
And we are here to represent the Indianapolis Public Library Staff Association. It's always a fun time to come out and hand out some money. So we are, we, we're, our committee has grown, I have to say, since I was first on it several years ago. We now have seven members.
We were five for a long time.
We were five for the long time, I think we're up to nine, so it's a good thing. In fact, the scholarship money we hand out has grown up to, I think we have, what, five people tonight? So without further ado, I'd like to hand out some money. Okay, and so first, Emily Greilak, P S A from Michigan Road. Corey Minor, Administrative Assistant and P D A. Katrina Barnett, Team Lead and L S C, C M S A. Amber Powell, P S A from Southport Branch. And last but not least, Valerie LeFay, P S A of Wayne. She's actually working this evening, so I'll accept on her behalf. We hand these out in the spring and in the fall, so this was our fall scholarship. We'll be handing out again, due date is May first, twenty twenty-five. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Great, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to approval of minutes. So for, for, first is the regular meeting from December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four?
Summarize.
Second?
Second.
All right, the minutes have been moved in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call to approve the minutes.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
All right, the motion carried, thank you. All right, moving on to the Finance Committee. Dr. White is Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Beederman, I want to start my remarks by thanking you for promoting me from facilities to money. I enjoy Adam's personality so much, I'm going to miss him. But I'm not upset or sad, because I have the pleasure of working with Lolita and Mary. So to make a long sentence short, I'm going to call Lolita and Mary to give our financial report.
Good afternoon, Board President Beederman and the trustees. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good, this is our first board meeting for the year. Haven't seen y'all all year, look. Mary and I will present the December twenty twenty-four Treasury Report. I'll re-review the revenue, and Mary will review the expenditures, I think, there it goes. For the ending of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for the revenue, we're actually seven percent over our budget, which is excellent. Five percent of it's come from the property taxes, and one percent is for the intergovernmental budget. So we did receive a little more than five percent for the property taxes, and that's due to the A V being higher for this year than what we expected during the budget season. And then one percent of the intergovernmental fund was more due to, we did receive a little bit more of the E rate and a little bit more of the COED this year. And then for the charges for services, the printer revenue exceeded our budget, and, which was a little bit more than we expected as well. And for the miscellaneous, our interest rate, I mean, our interests have, we received one point eight million. And as you can see, the Huger Fund and Trust Indiana interest rate is lowering. So we were up at a little bit over five percent during twenty twenty-four, but again, you know, this is what is expected. Hopefully, before the end of this calendar year, it won't drop down too much. Our summary of our, of our details for the Treasury Report is on page eighteen of the Board Docs, but the details, what I hope that everyone will review, that's from page twenty to twenty-two, and then also our cash flow. On the next slide is the slope graph, and here you'll see that the gray bar is our budget, and the blue bar is December twenty twenty-four, and the orange bar is December twenty twenty-three. And as you can see, that is really consistent, as you can tell, and our, the blue bar shows that it's a little bit higher than it was in twenty twenty-three as far as property taxes. And then the year-to-date, bar graph on the right-hand side is the year-to-date information. And again, the blue bar is for the twenty twenty-four, orange is twenty twenty-three, and yellow is the budget. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the revenue? Mary will now present the expenditures. There you go, I'm sorry.
Our expenditures year-to-date are favorable as they are under the budget. We spent eighty-eight percent of the budget overall for the operating fund. Personal services and benefits, the largest component, was eighty-eight percent, and that was largely due to saving on the medical and dental insurance budget line item. Supplies are consistent and under budget, and other services and charges are favorable and under- Supplies are consistent and under budget, and other services and charges are favorable and under budget. And, um, even though, um, we do have 1.5 million encumbered there, which set aside, that's not included in this number, but even with that, we will, of course, be under budget. On capital outlay, the, we're slightly, um, I don't know why it says we're over budget. We do have a hundred thousand in addition, um, to this, uh, encumbered for book invoices. So that's planning for the next year's budget, which we'll get into in a resolution forthcoming. So overall, year-to-date, we're doing well. And, um, the next slide is the graph presentation. Month-to-date is the bar graph, and year-to-date is the line graph. December 2024 is blue, and this is breaking it down by category. So the largest is Personal Services and Benefits. And it compares to the prior year and to the budget, so. And then on the year-to-date, um, we have that. In yellow is the budget, and, um, blue is for 2024 and orange for 2023. So you can see that the Personal Services and Benefits ended up lower than budget. Supplies are right on par, and, um, other services and charges, we are under budget. The blue line kind of disappeared on mine, but it's in there. And, uh, capital outlay, which is books. It's right on par with budget. Do you have any questions over the expenses?
Any, any questions from? All right, I, I have a question.
Okay.
So with regard to looking at the December 2024 chart for Personal Services and Benefits, I noticed the budget had, uh, 3.2 million for the month, and we were at 3.359 million. Is that just a one-month thing, or is that, uh, going to be a consistent thing moving forward?
No, I think it's a one-month thing. We had a, the bonus that we distributed in December, so.
And then we also had the Good Wage Initiative that started in November, so it increased it a little bit more in December than what we had budgeted for that month.
Thank you. Any other questions?
You had said that, uh, supplies are under budget. What do you account for that?
Well, we try to save, um, funds on the Staples Bill, which, you know, and pretty much the branches have to stick to their budgets on that. And, and they're very good about doing so. They don't ask for more. Probably maybe, even if they need it, but. To be honest, it's quite surprising that it is under budget because, you know, supplies are very expensive.
Because everything else is going up.
Right, and it's, you know, sometimes the timing of when we receive the invoices and, you know, but the staff is very good, good at trying to, you know, stay up on the budget with their supplies. Yeah.
Great.
I know what that is.
He blown up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, uh, so, uh, thank you for the, uh, report, uh, the treasurer. Um, we need to, uh, accept the report of the treasurer for December 2024 for filing for audit. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Now, hearing none, let's have a call of the roll.
Mr. Peterman.
Uh, approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
All right, motion carried. Now, uh, you guys have the honor of presenting the first resolution of 2025.
Yes.
Uh, so Resolution One, um, is authorize an adoption of, of, um, disclosure of waived fees and fines. Annually, the state guidelines require the board to discuss, I mean, not discuss, but to disclose the amount of fines and fees waived on patrons' accounts. These are fines and fees and miscellaneous charges that the library has deemed uncollectible during the year. And for the year ending of December 31st, 2024, we had a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. That was, um, undeeemed collectible, so we are disclosing this. And, um, as you can see, for the month of April, um, of last year, we, there was a higher bar. That's when we, um, did like a lot of cleanup. So, um, for 2024, you can see it's been just consistent across those months, and it's been ranging between six thousand to thirteen thousand a month that we are, uh, waiving fees for at various different branches. And, um, this did not go through the Finance Committee?
Correct. So at this point, we would need both a motion and a second, um, for Resolution 1-2025 regarding the disclosure of waived fines and fees.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's, oh, okay.
Mr. Peterman.
No, we got a question.
Oh, sorry.
We're going back for questions.
So does that mean that people who owe fees, they are waived? How does that work?
Yeah.
So it is taken out of their record?
All right, any other questions? Let's move on to a roll call.
Yeah, Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Let's move on to Resolution 2-2025.
2-2025 is the adoption of, um, thus outstanding purchase orders for 2024. The state guidelines require the board to authorize the outstanding purchase orders for the year-end. Those outstanding purchase orders were not paid prior to December 31st, 2024. Therefore, will be necessary to carry them forward into the new fiscal year. However, this does not affect the December, I mean, the 2025 budget. It comes out of the, um, it's, it's appropriated and comes out of the 2024 budget. In the resolution, you'll see a list of all the POs, and the total of the POs, um, total is about 1.7 million, and this will match the detail, uh, which is on page twenty-two of the board docs of the Treasury Report. So, um,
Okay, so, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 2-2025? Regarding the outstanding purchase orders of 2024? So we've got two, two moves. Is there a second?
And a second one.
All right, and a second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a call of the roll.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
The motion carried. Let's move on to Resolution 3-2025.
Resolution three, um, this is confirming Marion County Board of Finance. Uh, in pursuit to enter an Indiana Code 5-13-7-2B, the fiscal body may designate the Marion County Board of Finance to serve as the library's local board of finance. It has been the practice of the library to designate the Marion County Board of Finance to serve in this capacity, capacity in the past. Uh, library management recommends the library continues with this, uh, relationship for 2025.
Great.
This is annually.
We do this annually. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve Resolution 3-2025 regarding confirming Marion County Board of Finance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll now have a call of the roll.
And Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. The motion carried. Any more business?
Yeah, I have not been very successful with this little. Okay, thank you. Um, on this slide, you'll see that, uh, again, um, Indianapolis Public Library, we receive our award, our certificate of, of, um, achieving excellence in financial reporting, um, by the GFOA. And me personally want to, uh, thank Mary and my staff. They've been excellent to ensure that we're in compliance with, um, Yap and everything else. So, um, I just want to present this to everyone. We have received this probably many years, maybe.
Thirty-four.
About thirty-four years, so, and it's good that we can continue on this trend. I just want to inform everyone that we received this award again. Next slide, please. And this is just a few update, uh, updates. We start our new fiscal year, of course, and so we're gearing to start our pre-audit season as well as, um, the upcoming budget season. So, um, at this time, we'll be very busy. However, we're gonna make sure that we get through this season. Does anyone having questions for us?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, guys.
Moving on to the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee. Dr. Palacio, Chair. Is there anything to report for this meeting?
Just want to say thanks for appointing me to this, uh, committee. And, uh, I don't have anything to report for this meeting, but, uh, hopefully we'll get going for the next meeting.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the Facilities Committee chaired by Dr. Lisa Riolo, with Pat Payne and, uh, Dr. Pat Payne and Dr. Eugene White, and lots of doctors on that committee. We, uh, have a couple of, uh, resolutions. There was not a committee meeting this month, is my understanding, so we'll ask, uh, Mr. Adam Parsons to come up, explain those, and we will have a vote and a motion and a second on each of them.
Thank you. Let's see if I can show them on the right slide. Yes. Dr. White can't get rid of me quite yet. Or my personality. Uh, we have, uh, which way am I supposed to point this? That way. We have two resolutions. Both are fairly simple. Resolution 4-2025 is approval of the first addendum to the Mechanical Services Contract with Ellis Mechanical. Uh, Ellis Mechanical was awarded the Mechanical Services Contract for the entire system in, uh, September of 2021. There we go. Uh, with Resolution 49-2021, they started services in October. Uh, our standard contracts are three, one, 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 so that's a three-year term with three additional one-year extensions if both parties are agreeable. Uh, we've discussed with Ellis Mechanical about an extension, uh, a one-year extension. Uh, they are agreeable, and this resolution would extend the, uh, current agreement through October 10th, 2025. So Ellis is offered to have no increase in price. About thirty minutes ago, I looked up the BLS inflation calculator, and it's been about fourteen percent since October of '21, so a zero percent increase is good. Uh, annual preventive maintenance maintains at $53,000, and then we've got the hourly rates for any, um, reactive or ad hoc maintenance. And this will be funded out of our operating fund of 101. Uh, the vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform 100% of the work. They will continue to purchase supplies from XBE vendors, which I have more detail on the next slide. So that is, uh, from the resolution, or the BAR, one or the other, uh, from 2021, stating that, uh, Ellis Mechanical will procure, um, supplies from various XBE vendors. And those are the three vendors and their totals across all three of those years. So Ellis has been true to their word in tracking those purchases and will continue as part of this, uh, agreement. And that's, that's it for this resolution.
All right, so, um, this, having not gone through committee, needs a, a motion and a second. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 4-2025 regarding the approval of first addendum to Mechanical Services Contract with Ellis Mechanical?
Who to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a call of the roll.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
The motion is carried. Uh, let's move on to Resolution 5-2025.
All right. Uh, this is a resolution for approval of the first addendum to, sorry, that's, title is wrong. And the actual resolution is second addendum, which is correct. Uh, to the Off-Duty Police Officer Services Contract with OffDutyCops.com. So our current contract was approved through the end of last year by Resolution 44-2024 for the second half of the year. So, uh, we put out an RFP last year, and we only got two responses, so we rejected and re-advertised. We recently received proposals again for that re-advertised RFP for Off-Duty Police Officer Services. Uh, we got four proposals, um, and between, uh, we, we were questioning how we wanted to approach Off-Duty Police Officer Services, to be honest. Um, that's the long and the short of it. Um, you know, similar to our Library Security Assistant Program where we brought third-party library security assistants basically in-house as NDPL employees, we're looking to do something similar, uh, with off-duty police officers, um, either as direct employees, 1099 contractors, I'm not sure what, so I don't want to elaborate too much. So in the meantime, we would like to extend our existing contract with Off-Duty Cops by one year to the end of 2025, and that will give us the next eleven months, well, really, eight months to decide, uh, how we want to move forward with Off-Duty Police Officer Services, uh, for the system.
Great, um, so because there was not a committee meeting, we need to have a motion and a second. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 5-2025 regarding the approval of the second addendum to Off-Duty Police Officer Services Contract with OffDutyCops.com Inc.?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a call of the roll.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
My only request, Adam, is that one that's in the board, board packet is not the, uh, resolution that you and I worked through. Um, so if we could just make sure that that's what ends up, um, in the record.
Sure.
Please.
Yeah, my mistake.
It's okay.
In addition to that, in our, uh, signature packet, there's a Resolution 6-2025 for presentation, but there's not a 6-2025 in our packet? Is that not being presented today?
So initially, um, uh, five was, uh, 5-2025 was an extension of this contract through the end of March because we anticipated awarding a three-year contract for Off-Duty Police Officer Services as a result of this re-advertised RFP. However, since we're rejecting all and we're reevaluating how we want to go about this, there is no six. There is no reward.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation today.
Trying to get this to the end for the next person. Okay.
Excellent, all right. Next, we move on to the Library Foundation Update. Roberta, hey, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here just very briefly because I have a couple of things I'd like to share with you all. First of all, really want to thank Ray for his service on the Library Foundation Board. As you know, um, the Library Foundation does have a representative from the Library Board of Trustees serving on our board. It's part of our bylaws. And we're also very excited to off, um, welcome Dr. Lisa Riolo to our board next. So, um, we are excited about that relationship. And the next thing is that we wanted to really just congratulate you all on your strategic plan. I had a pretty close seat to the development of this plan, and I was just so impressed by the process, the result, and the way everybody worked together. So wanted to say congratulations, and I'll just say that the foundation finds this report, uh, plan to be very inspiring, and we've been talking about it with donors and getting really good feedback. Friendly reminder, that Circulate Night at the Library is on May 9th at Central Library this year, so we hope you'll, either if you have a, um, opportunity to be a sponsor or buy tickets, we hope you'll consider that, and we have a link for buying tickets in your meeting book. Um, and the next thing I'll share is that, um, we do have some wonderful stories from donors about the impact of the library on their lives and why that causes them to give. And so one thing I like to say to our staff is that as much as And so, one thing I like to say to our staff is that as much as I like to think it's our foundation staff that's getting these gifts, it's really how the public feels about what you're doing that is really the, the, the fuel in our, in our fundraising engine. So our job is to harness that, cultivate it, and to grow it, but it's there because of the wonderful work that you and the staff do, and so just wanted that to be really clear. And then also, we have listed in the report some, um, things we funded recently, and so some upcoming things for us is that we will be approving our strategic plan in February, and when we do that, we'll be back to share that with you. But we want to thank the board and many members of the library staff for giving us feedback into our strategic plan, and I think you'll see your suggestions and feedback represented in the final document. So that is all I have this evening. Just wanted to say thank you and happy new year to all of you in person.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right.
Thanks for all the work you do over there. Yeah.
Yeah, and thank you, uh, love being on the board. There's a lot of great people working with the foundation, both, uh, staff and board. There's just a lot of talent there, and, and you've done a great job cultivating that, and will continue to do so in the future. And Circulate's a great event. I was there last year. Plan to go again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ray?
Yeah.
I just want to commend you, Roberta, for your great follow-up and your positive, uh, communication to donors and what have you. Keep up the good work.
Well, all of you up here are donors, so I want to say thank you for being a donor in addition to being, um, you know, leaders of the library system as volunteers, so thank you. It's, it's our pleasure. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Report of the CEO.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, board president, uh, members of the community and staff. Before you is the monthly confirmatory resolution seven dash twenty twenty-five related to financial travel and personnel matters that occurs between each board meeting. This resolution is in the typical format, and I would ask for your approval.
Sir, motion approved, resolution seven dash twenty twenty-five regarding finances, personnel, and travel.
You said this is a procedural action that appoints new salaried hires, right?
Say again, I'm sorry.
It's a procedural action for new salaried hires, right?
Yes.
Yes. And how many others?
Uh, I don't, I don't know how many there were.
Sir, uh, a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, resolution seven dash twenty twenty-five has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think it's useful to have some of the numbers of new individuals and some of the, um, compensation changes and resignations. Is that information in the report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
And Dr. White.
Approve.
All right, the motion is carried. Uh, Mr. Hill, please continue.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, this is just a quick rundown of what we're going to cover in this presentation. We'll do a program review, uh, library access, which is referring to the shared system and the library card campaign. We'll do a quick go recap of the goals that we had for twenty twenty-four. We'll do staff recognition, uh, easy scan stations, an average day in the library, and then upcoming events. The first item we have is the adult program highlights. Uh, throughout the year, of course, we had several, uh, different programs, but I chose these three here to highlight. The first one is, uh, Tap Tap Evening, a Haitian culture event. Uh, community members gathered at Glendale Central Library in twenty twenty-four to explore Haiti's Haitian Creole language through history, culture, arts, and storytelling and music. We had a hundred and twenty-one people who attended the first event at Glendale in July, and then we held a second event at Central, uh, which welcomed a hundred and twenty-one visitors. The criminal explagement, we had ninety-five, um, guests who attended and visited Central Library on August third in support with eviction ceiling, explagement of non-violent crimes, and immigration paperwork. We had attorneys from the Neighborhood Christian Legal Clinic and Indy Bar Association who led the appointments to help our guests complete their paperwork and clear their records. AARP Tax Aid. To wrap up the season, partners at the AARP Foundation offered tax filing services to seven hundred and twenty visitors at our Fort Ben branch. Two hundred and eighty attendees learned about tax and successfully were able to file, uh, their own returns. Youth Programs. We had the Ninth Annual Dia Del Nino, Be My Neighbor Day. This weekend event once again hosted in partnership with WFYI, Celebrated Community and Literacy. We had sensory-friendly play hour, concerts by One, Two, Three Andreas, a toddler dance party, a storytime in both English and Spanish. One thousand books before kindergarten reading challenge. We had, uh, just over nineteen hundred total participants who tracked their reading on Beanstack. Parents and caregivers learned about the fundamentals of early literacy to make the most of reading with their little ones. Then, of course, we had the summer reading program. We had over eleven thousand children who stepped up to the challenge of reading for twenty hours or more by summer's end while earning some great pre, uh, pet-themed prizes. The branches with the most attendance were Franklin Road at one thousand four hundred sixty-nine, Glendale had one thousand three hundred and thirty-four, and Lawrence had one thousand forty-nine, and Michigan Road, seven hundred and sixty-eight. And then a program across the library system, uh, starting at the top left, working way across, we had six thousand seventy-eight youth programs in twenty twenty-four. That included teenage, or teen, school age, and infants, and we had a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty-nine, uh, participants. And then for the adult programs, we had two thousand five oh six, and we had twenty-three thousand eighty-three participants. For our youth programs, um, we had an increase of about five point seven percent in youth programs. Uh, in participation, we had a twelve point seven percent increase in participation in youth programs. In adult programs, we had a twenty percent increase in adult programs in twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three. And participants, we had eleven point three percent increase in participate, in participants in our adult programs. Uh, library access. So the shared system, in twenty twenty-four, the Indianapolis Public Library added fifteen schools to the shared system. The shared system is a collaborative network that connects the Indianapolis Public Library, um, with other schools and museums and special libraries. This partnership enables participating schools to operate as branches of the library, allowing students to access the Indianapolis Public Library's catalog. Through the system, students can request books, DVDs, and CDs from the Indianapolis Public Library or any other shared system library with materials delivered directly to the school system. And I want to give a special shout-out to, uh, Sarah Batt, who is the manager of Shared Systems, uh, a lot of great work, so thank you, and not only to her, but the folks in IT and, uh, CMSA who also helped work to make that come through. The library card campaign. The library e-resource card initiative, which aims to ensure all public school students in Marion County have access to essential library services. The Indianapolis Public Library has teamed up with two new schools in twenty twenty-four, which, Elance Academy, a K-eight charter school in the heart of Indianapolis international marketplace, and St. Mark Catholic School located on the south side of Indianapolis to provide free library cards to students. Elance Academy, which serves six hundred and eighty-five students, they had four hundred and forty-two students who did not have library cards. St. Mark Catholic School serves four hundred and thirteen students and had two hundred and forty-nine students who did not have library cards. The e-resource cards enable students to borrow ebooks, e-audiobooks, stream music and videos, and utilize over eighty research databases. It also provides limited borrowing access to physical materials. Although for full library card privileges, students can visit any Indianapolis Public Library branch with a parent or guardian to get a full access card. So again, thank you to, uh, Cordia Watkins, who is the, uh, manager of Circulations and her team for, uh, working with, uh, the schools to get, uh, library access. And then I want to briefly go over some of the goals that we had that was in each one of the board reports for each quarter. As you see in quarter one, uh, there was quite a few, but I just wanted to put three that I wanted to, uh, for each quarter, and then there's one that I'll talk about real briefly. So the climate improvement, uh, the survey was cut and conducted in March, and that was the second, the follow-up to the first, uh, climate improvement that we had, so we wanted to do a follow-up. We started that in March, and we received our results back in April, and we shared those with the staff. And one of the things that I just want to share here real quickly that was shared to the board before is that improved DEI strategy rating, participants' rating of the library strategies for improving equity, diversity, inclusion, and accessibility increased by thirty-one percent from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, reflecting significant improvement in the culture. Going over to quarter two, um, the behavioral policy, thank you to our Chief Public Services Officer, John Helling, uh, did a great job of working with that, working with some community members, and making sure that we got input from everyone, uh, for our new behavior policy that went into effect. Going over to the third quarter, uh, I'll just touch on the policy review since Dr. Palacio, uh, mentioned that, making sure he has some work for the next DPHR committee. We worked on a policy review for all the policies for the library. We do have a schedule with a calendar, and you should see quite a, quite a bit of those in the next DPHR meeting coming up in February. Uh, for the fourth quarter, again, we did our second staff engagement survey of the year. We did one in quarter one and one in quarter four, uh, quarter three. And just a quick, uh, note here, um, the number of employees rating the work environment as fair increased, uh, twenty-two point six percent. And then, uh, the most notable shift occurred in the good category, where the number of employees rating the work environment as good increased by twenty-nine point three percent from quarter one. Thank you for everyone who worked on the staff engagement survey, talent and development, and the, uh, Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie, thank you guys for working on that and getting that, uh, out to the staff so they're aware of those things as well. And that was also, I sent that to you guys this evening as well. And the next thing here is our December Star Award winners. Um, we had our reception for fourth quarter winners in January, and I would just like to go ahead and read off the names here really quickly. Uh, patron services was Charlie Kane. Peer support, Mark Curlin. Community involvement, Kevin Summers. Team excellence, innovation and technology department. Page excellence was Azaria Barnett, Millicent Jackson, and Melanie Baron, and they are all from the East Thirty-Eighth Street Branch. And then the community's choice was Sarah Lucas. We give them a round of applause. And then before we move on, um, the Board of Trustees in front of you, you should have a, there's a black pouch, and inside of the black pouch is a coin. The coin was made with all the different logos, the colors that the library has. So on the front is the logo. On the back is a three-D rendering of the Central Library with Chief Executive Officer on the back, and also the new mission. So I just wanted to let you know that we did have that, and I want to say, um, the CEO coin, I'm gonna read this here real quickly, is a special symbol of recognition created to celebrate the achievements of our staff. Individuals who exemplify the library's values, outstanding service, leadership, and dedication, the CEO coin serves as a heartfelt token of appreciation. By honoring these contributions, the CEO coin reflects our respect, gratitude, and a personal and meaningful way. This recognition not only reinforces the culture of excellence, but also aspires to strengthen the bond between NDPL and our valued employees. The CEO will personally award the CEO coin to staff members whose exceptional work has reached a level of excellence. And then with that, if I have some time on my hands, I would act to ask, um, I want to present a few coins here. If I can have Kelly Donahue come forward, and if it's okay, you can just stand, you can just stand right there. So Kelly does a lot of work for the library, takes amazing photographs, always out, uh, getting the library in, in great light, and I'll just read a few things here real quick. Kelly Donahue is the, the digital media specialist for the Indianapolis Public Library. She has served on the communications and marketing team for the past several years. Kelly specializes in videography and photography, bringing the library's stories to life for both internal and external audiences. You have seen her create videos on our homepage, YouTube channels, social media, and staff orientation and staff day. Kelly also oversees in-branch digital displays content and provides technical support for all Board of Trustees' meetings. Kelly's sharp attention to detail results in beautiful photos and videos, and she has a calm and professional approach that makes her subjects in front of her camera feel at ease. Along with managing a variety of projects for the library, Kelly also dedicates time to formally mentoring a few staff members passionate about storytelling and video production. And I got, I got one more here real quick. If, uh, Connie, if you can come up here, please. Connie, Scott, and Linda. Linda Kaepernick, is Linda here? She had to leave, okay. So I just want to say, I first met Connie, uh, it's been a long time ago. Connie was the president of the, uh, IBL and Indian Black Librarians Network, and I was a member at the time. I wasn't even a librarian, I was just helping them out, and she asked me to design their website. So I designed their very first website, so that's how I met Connie. It's been a long time, so thank you, Connie, for your work. Linda, who's not here, uh, I think I applied for maybe ten or fifteen positions for the library, and Linda Kaepernick was the only person who interviewed me, and she's still here, so I'm, I'm, I'm grateful for her as well. And I'll start off by saying, um, thank you for the work that you do with the seniors and the students. As being a, a person who managed a branch that had a high school next to them, um, I don't envy you, I know it's a lot of hard work, and I really appreciate what you do. Uh, the resource fairs that you had early in the year, the outreach that you do, your partnerships with Cafe and Morehead, um, not just those two, but others. Also, how you serve your patrons. Uh, you look like you've done a really great job with your programs, you have people who attend your programs, and also I talked with, uh, your counselor, Andy Nielsen, uh, not too long ago, and he wanted me to tell you that he thought you did a wonderful job, you and your staff as well. So, uh, with that, on behalf of the executive leadership team, uh, I would present you with the coin as well, and then I'll give one to Linda and Andy. Okay, moving on. Um, the next thing here is the easy stand stations. We started a pilot program in, uh, April of twenty twenty-three with five locations. The easy scans allow you to, um, scan the email, which we didn't have before, and getting feedback from staff, we found out that that was a very popular thing that we needed. You could go try to use a scanner, but it wouldn't let you scan the email, so now we can scan to email. Uh, the easy scan stations also, uh, will fax, they also will edit photos, and they also will translate documents. So that's something that we had in twenty twenty-four. The chart, the chart that you see here shows how these machines are used by patrons. They were used nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-eight times with a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-three pages. Let's see, we can see that the demand for scanned email that staff identifies holds true in the data as a hundred and three thousand pages were scanned to email from those machines. The top three locations were the Eagle Branch with, uh, twenty-one percent, uh, East Thirty-Eighth Street Branch with fifteen percent, and then the Central Branch with eleven percent. Uh, these machines can also, again, fax, they can edit photos, and they can translate documents. This data that you see here does not include Pike and Nora because they're not open yet, and I think there may be one or two other branches that we don't have that data for yet. But, uh, so the easy scan stations have been a real benefit to patrons in our community. Staff opportunities, amongst others, we had courageous conversations in the workplace that was held at the Systems Managers Meeting. Uh, some of the things that the facilitator talked about in our learning objectives, including divining, defining what courageous conversations are and discuss why they matter. Uh, we discussed the importance of resolving conflict and having crucial conversations, and reviewed tools for giving and receiving feedback, and we had, um, forty-four staff And we had 44 staff who attended that training. The other one was the Race for Equality and Change, a comprehensive DEI initiative in motorsports. The facilitator was Mr. Jimmy McMillan, the Chief Diversity Officer and Senior Corporate Counsel for Penske Entertainment. He discussed Penske Motorsports Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Access and Belonging Program, and its focus on the following key initiatives: the recruitment, retention, development, and promotion of a diverse workforce. And we had 27 staff who attended that training. And then next here, this is an average day in the library. Starting from the right, going clockwise, we had 55,05 visitors, program attendance 331, new cardholders 123. Programs offered on any given day was 15, and the study room bookings on any given day was 116. Physical circulation was 13,359. And then with that, I'm going to show just like a two-minute brief video here real quick.
If you've ever visited an Indianapolis Public Library branch, you've likely used our collection of books, audiobooks, DVDs, CDs, and more. Here at the Eagle Branch, we had over 190,000 physical items in circulation last year, averaging nearly 16,000 checkouts a month. While that's no small number, it's just a drop in the bucket of the 5 million-plus physical and 3 million-plus digital items that were circulated across the library system in 2024. How do we get those materials? Where do they come from, and how do they get into our branches? Enter our Collection Management Team. Staff within Collection Management are responsible for acquiring, cataloging, processing, curating, and delivering new collection items to all library locations and partner organizations within our shared system. This process includes the physical collection as well as digital materials such as eBooks, streaming services, and databases. Once an item is selected, purchased, and delivered to our Library Services Center, it's then processed, cataloged, and sorted into totes with additional collection items to head to their next destination. In our case, that is the Eagle Branch. Collection Management then delivers the totes to the branch, and our staff take it from there. We're responsible for updating the catalog accordingly and adding the new items to our shelves, as well as marking any held items for library users who will pick them up later at their convenience. We also incorporate our collection into our programming, like storytimes, pathway-to-literacy classes, and more. The Eagle Branch serves as a diverse community of library users from all over the world, and our collection reflects that. We offer materials in a variety of languages like Spanish, French, Arabic, and Haitian Creole, and have even enhanced our English language learning selection with help from our Collection Management and its world language selectors. Serving our community and providing relevant materials is our goal, and we're grateful to the library and its many staff who make all this possible.
And that was another great video from Ms. Kelly Donahue. Thank you for that. We appreciate it. All right. Okay, upcoming events. On Saturday, February 1st, we have the Free For All the Public Library Documentary. This event will include a free screening and the documentary, the documentary Free For All the Public Library, and the documentary short, Read or Restrict, followed by a brief conversation with local filmmakers and a Q&amp;A with our own Chief Public Services Officer, John Helling, and WFYI Investigative Education Reporter, Lee V. Gaines. Nora's Grand Opening is September 15th. We are scheduled to open on time. The circulation reference desks are scheduled the week of February 3rd, so we should be still opening on time. And then last, but not least, Meet the Artists. Our annual Meet the Artists exhibit was created to supply a venue for local talented African-American artists to show off their creative works, artists whose works might not otherwise have a chance to appear in front of such a large audience. The event provides an opportunity to educate the community at large and promote the work of the artists, starting on January 29th and running through March 29th is the exhibits and the art that you can go look at. And then the opening reception is Saturday, September 15th, so we have a couple of big events on that day at 5:30. And that is the end of my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, there was no unfinished business, no new business. Item 13, Future Agenda Items. This time is made available for discussion of items not on the agenda of which are of interest to library board members, and the opportunity is given to suggest items to be included on future library board meeting agendas. Do any board members have something to suggest for the February 2025 board meeting? Okay. The next meeting of the library, the next regular meeting, is going to be Monday, February 24th, 2025, at the West Perry Branch at 6650 South Harding Street at 6:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.